Welcome everyone. I would like to ask everyone to stand before the flag. Flag be held. The flag is raised. Consider your government, your citizens. Honoration under God, be visible for the liberation and justice of all. If you have any questions, please move back into this room. Please take this to the rear, use the door in the car, or walk through to the safety station opposite the main entrance of the building. Further instructions will be given at the safety station. I would like to compliment the principal and staff on the excellent condition of the building and provide this next section. Thank you. Okay. Board of Education accepts the amendments of the Board of Education meeting's held on May 2nd, 9/15/21 and May 30th, 2018 as detailed in the Friday Act. Would you like to agree? That by his taking, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasury's report for the month of April 2018 detailed in the Friday Act. Would you like to agree? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. The Board of Education approves the principal's action report dated in 2013, 2018 as amended and detailed in the Friday Act. Would you like to agree? That by his taking, as this contains information about individual staff members, we cannot discuss this in public. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Scholes.
Good evening, everybody. It's the light that sets the mood. So tonight is actually a very special board meeting. At tonight's board meeting, we sort of get to honor, again, we get to honor those people who have served the district for many, many years, and we will hear about those people and how special they are. We also get to honor those people who are receiving tenure tonight. So we have people at the beginning of their career and people who are going into the next chapter of either their lives or their career. And with that, I go over to the end of that folder, to Mr. Press, who will give the recognition of our all retired.
Any other things? No? Is that better? Okay. I am going to, I'm going to ask the principal of our high school, he's having a lot to go, if you can come on.
Good evening, everyone. My pleasure to announce the following retirees. The first retiree is Marie Mazzara. Whereas Marie Mazzara has served the Baldwin Union Free School District since 2000 as a guidance counselor, working alongside her fellow guidance counselors, teachers, school psychologists, school social workers, secretaries, and administrators. Whereas she has chaired the senior awards ceremony, junior college night, has served as honor society advisor, district mentor, and has been a longstanding PTA representative. Whereas she has counseled thousands of students and provided academic, emotional, social, and postgraduate guidance. Whereas her kindness and genuine caring has supported innumerable students in choosing their academic schedules as well as sending them off to colleges, universities, the military, and the field of, and the world rather, of work. Whereas her compassion for parents, students, and her colleagues will not be forgotten. Whereas her outstanding work ethic, her compassion, and dedication to her students enhance Baldwin High School. Whereas her contributions to the Baldwin community will never be forgotten. Whereas the Board of Education and district administration wish to express their gratitude for her 18 years of dedicated service and wish her a happy and healthy retirement filled with family, friends, and relaxation. Ms. Mazzara, I'll see you on the way out, I have something. The next honoree is Ms. Arlene Slade. Whereas, Arlene Slade has served Baldwin Union Free School District since 1987 as a guidance counselor, working alongside her fellow guidance counselors, teachers, school psychologists, school social workers, secretaries, and administrators. Whereas she has chaired the college connection, freshman sophomore college night, as well as having served as advisor of the National Honor Society and numerous school committees. Whereas she has provided thousands of students with academic, emotional, social, and postgraduate guidance. Whereas her benevolence and genuine thoughtfulness guided students in choosing their academic schedules as well as sending them off to colleges, universities, the military, and the world of work. Whereas her dedication to parents, students, and her colleagues will not be forgotten. Whereas her commitment to the field of counseling and her belief in all students has helped them to reach their potential. Whereas her contributions to the Baldwin community will not be forgotten. Whereas the Board of Education and district administration wish to express their gratitude for more than 30 years of dedicated service and wish her a happy, healthy retirement filled with family, friends, and relaxation. Congratulations. The next honoree is Mr. Lewis. Whereas Robert Lewis has served public education as a business teacher and enthusiastically served the students of the Baldwin School District for 44 years as a member of the business department. Whereas he has devoted much time and effort to helping students master the essential business and computer skills that are embedded within the curricula of the business department and are in accordance with the New York State Learning Standards in Career Development and Occupational Studies and the National Standards for Business and Marketing. Whereas he has successfully coordinated the New York State Business and Marketing Honor Society and induction ceremonies, has served as a district coordinator of the Temporary Assistance to Needing Families Program and Workforce Investment Act, and has been involved with Youth Services Program, the Summer Youth Program, and the creation of the Life Skills Business Curriculum. And whereas he has professionally executed his duties as a teacher in the Baldwin School District. The Board of Education and district administration thank and commend him for his 44 years of outstanding service and his commitment to the district and wish him a happy and healthy retirement. Congratulations.
Next, I would like to invite up the principal of our middle school, Mr. Tim Mark.
Mr. Anderson here. I'd like to call it Joe Tarantino. Whereas Mr. Tarantino has served the Baldwin School District for 30 years, beginning his career at Milburn School, and then worked at Plaza Elementary School, where he served as assistant to the principal while teaching sixth grade. And whereas Mr. Tarantino made Baldwin Middle School his home, teaching man and serving as team leader, making a tremendous difference in the lives of so many faculty and students alike. And whereas he has been a committed member of the Baldwin community, as shown through his participation in the Thanksgiving dinner, Hurricane Sandy relief, coordinating the after-school general program at both Milburn and Plaza Elementary Schools to assist families in need. And whereas Joe has a heart full of compassion for all members of the faculty and staff, continually lending his support in so many ways, including participating in the Turkey Bowl, donating sick days to a colleague in need. And whereas Mr. Tarantino has a strong connection with his students, his rapport with his students has earned him to be selected numerous times to the In Recognition of Excellence Dinner. Additionally, Joe has participated in the mentoring program, thereby assisting many young people with navigating through the challenging years of pre-adolescence. And whereas Mr. Tarantino is a true Baldwin family man and has dedicated himself to showing the young people of Baldwin that they can accomplish any goal they set out to in their lives. And whereas, he's a diehard Mets fan. The Board of Education and district administration appreciate Mr. Tarantino's contributions and years of service, congratulate him on his retirement, and wish him health and happiness in all future endeavors. I now would like to call it Mr. Edward Cirkio. Whereas Edward Cirkio has served the Baldwin School District for 30 years and has impacted many lives, both students and faculty alike. And whereas he began his career at Baldwin Junior High School as a social studies teacher. He then served as a foreign language teacher, instructing both Spanish and Italian. When the opportunity presented itself, he returned to the history department, where he has been a distinguished member for over 22 years. And whereas Mr. Cirkio has also given back to the community of Baldwin, participating in many of the school community functions to raise money, including Jump Rope for Heart, Superstorm, Sandy Relief. He also played faculty touch football games and faculty versus the Harlem Wizard basketball games to help raise funds for cancer awareness and playground equipment for elementary schools. And whereas making connections in the classroom is invaluable, as are the connections you make with the students outside of it. Mr. Cirkio is single-handedly responsible for the creation and implementation of Blue and Gold at the middle school, which has become a rite of passage for our eighth-grade students. In addition, Mr. Cirkio has forged many bonds with the student athletes of the middle school as a sports supervisor for the boys' football, wrestling, and as a baseball coach. The lessons he has taught our students on the field can transfer to situations off the field, and he has reinforced teamwork, dedication, and commitment to any task in life. And whereas it is because of his accomplishments that Mr. Cirkio has earned the Lifetime Achievement Award, the Distinguished Service Award, the Helen Slonam Teacher of the Year Award, and has been named an honorary lifetime member of the middle school PTA. Students have been selected year after year for the In Recognition of Excellence Award, the National Junior Honor Society's induction representative, as well as the High School Honor Society. And whereas Mr. Cirkio is a true man of value and faith and has dedicated his efforts to ensuring and empowering the youth of Baldwin that they have every opportunity to succeed in the world, whereas he's also a Mets fan. Two Mets fans in the building, bless them both. The Board of Education and district administration appreciate Mr. Cirkio's endless contributions and years of service and wish him much health and happiness in all future endeavors.
Next up, Mr. Anthony Young. Good evening. Is Barbara Babbiar out here?
Whereas Barbara Babbiar has served the Baldwin School District for 15 years, first as a clerical substitute and then as a typist clerk. And whereas Barbara served nine years at Baldwin Middle School in the attendance office, where she provided clerical support to six supervisors, additionally serving six years in the main office at Hastings Academy. And whereas she assisted countless numbers of parents and students by visiting, helping and monitoring their health and attendance needs with care and accuracy. And whereas Barbara assisted administration in maintaining the smooth operation of the main office at Hastings Academy for great efficiency and dedication. And whereas she has worked collaboratively with staff and administration in supporting many initiatives. And whereas Barbara was respected, resilient, dependable colleague, a warm, friendly, and outgoing personality, and the ability to remain calm when pressured. The Board of Education and the district administration wish to express their gratitude for her years of dedication, service, and wish her a happy and healthy retirement filled with family, grandchildren, friends, and relaxation.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next, I would like to invite Mr. Jimmy Calamaris. Good evening. I would like to call up Ms. Cindy Britton.
Whereas Cindy Britton has been teaching English as a second language to high schoolers that are new to the country. Whereas she has dedicated her career to equipping young people with English skills necessary to be successful adults in society. Whereas she has nurtured and supported students through the socio-emotional hardships of attending high school in an unfamiliar culture and language. Whereas she has organized numerous fundraisers and clothing drive over the years to help provide her needed students with warm clothes and food for the winter holidays. Whereas she has served as an advocate for students and families that could not advocate for themselves. Whereas she has served as a leader and a mentor to her colleagues in the E L department. Whereas she has collaborated with guidance counselors and other teachers to ensure that E S L students had supports in place to help them graduate. Whereas she has insisted on students always doing their best and has had students come back to visit her years later to thank her and tell her how much she helped make their lives better. The Board of Education and district administration extend their deeply felt gratitude for her 20 years of service and wish her health, happiness, and joyous future from time to time.
Next up, I would like to invite up Ms. Charisse Yannis.
I'd like to call up Barbara Brown. Barbara Brown has served Baldwin Union Free School District as a teaching assistant for 21 years. And whereas Barbara has dedicated so much of her time and effort to provide quality support within general and special education classrooms at Meadow School and Hillside Elementary. And whereas she has supported many students with disabilities in areas of reading and emotional support through the president's intervention team, working collaboratively with staff members to develop a nurturing environment for students within the continuum of services. And whereas her exceptional work ethic and dedication provided quality small room instruction allowing students to progress academically. And whereas Barbara will continue to foster her love for reading with her midlove, further her passion for cooking, baking, and scrappings, and enjoy spending quality time with her family and friends relaxing at their home or state. The Board of Education and district administration thank her for her many years of dedicated service and wish her a healthy and happy retirement, fulfilling all her passions and family visits. And Ellen Smith from the school?
Ellen Smith has served the Baldwin School District for 39 years. And whereas Ms. Smith began her career at Meadow Elementary School, where she taught for 22 years, later transferring to the middle school, where she taught for another 17 years. And whereas Ms. Smith has dedicated her commitment to the Baldwin School District by acting as a mentor to students, teachers, and student teachers. And whereas she has devoted her time to her students so that they are able to participate and enjoy events such as multicultural festivals, school musicals, dances. And whereas throughout the school year, you can always find Ms. Smith in her classroom working past school hours, creating exciting technology-based lessons. And whereas outside of her love for making a difference in the lives of students, Ellen has a passion for martial arts and has obtained her fifth degree, black belt, also enjoys skiing and reading. The Board of Education and district administration appreciate all of her contributions and years of service and congratulate her on her retirement and wish her health and happiness in all the future endeavors.
Next up, I would like to invite Mr. Andre Ruffalo. Would Richard Mendiati please come up?
Whereas Richard Mendiati has served the Baldwin Union Free School District since 1992 as a music teacher with a fine performing arts department assigned to Meadow Elementary School and some years at athletics elementary school. And whereas he has launched the musical journey of thousands of students and a foundational teacher for an award-winning program. And whereas Richard has directed an exciting jazz band at Meadow Elementary School and has spent many days working on his lunch period to support student performers and has successfully booked Santa Claus to conduct at Meadow Elementary School who went to concert for years. And whereas the tremendous collection of trophies for excellent performances of musical parts and where he leads the Meadow Elementary School marching band celebrating the event as Uncle Sam every Memorial Day. And whereas Richard's kindness, love for students, and commitment to excellence has made him not a master teacher but a transformative teacher. His contributions to the Baldwin community are cherished. The Baldwin Board of Education and District Administration wish to express their gratitude for Richard Mendiati's years of dedicated service and wish him a happy, healthy retirement filled with family, friends, and of course, music.
Now I just want to say that most bosses would not intentionally get pregnant in enough time to act as though it's you in your Santa outfit.
Okay, I'd like to present our last retirement. I'd like to invite Dr. Yala.
It's my pleasure to invite Ms. Acevedo, who's wonderful. Whereas Denise Charissa Acevedo has been an exemplary and dedicated educator, spending 35 years as an elementary teacher, assistant principal, and most recently 16 years as the principal at Lennox Elementary School. And whereas Ms. Acevedo is known to be a woman of integrity, handling all situations with the best interest of children at heart. And whereas Ms. Acevedo has nurtured Lennox School to be a calm and mindful educational environment for all. She is loved by her staff and the families of Lennox Schools, leading the school with an open heart, always willing to provide assistance in her pearls of wisdom. And whereas Ms. Acevedo's colleagues have known her to be classy, grounded, cool, and even healed while she has taken a leadership role in the Association of Baldwin Administrators. And whereas Ms. Acevedo has been a kindergarten and science elementary carverator, a liaison to the PTA, has served on campus interview committees, been a convocation facilitator, presented workshops to families on various academic and social emotional topics, as a lead value leader, a mentor to new teachers and administrators, a member of the Baldwin Teachers Center Policy Board, and has marched in campus memorials and parties. Therefore, the Baldwin, the Board of Education and District Administration will miss her common disposition and dedication to Baldwin very much. But we wish her a well-deserved retirement with her husband Jimmy and her children Janice and Jamie, and quality time with family and friends.
I'm supposed to be photo ops, but I would like to take the opportunity to thank the board, especially Mary Jill, who was on my interview committee. So thank you very much, Mary.
Good choice.
And all of the old boy and the central administrators for all the support of Lennox School. Thank you very much.
Before you guys leave, if you go a few more days in school, please leave all of your notes and your how-tos and the things that you've done so well for so many years behind. Please, if you're close to coming, from the back.
So on the other end of retirement is tenure. And the last board action was the personal action report. And in the personal action report, they approved the tenure of three O R teachers and one teacher who had received tenure who is here tonight. So I'm going to ask Emily Rogers. So we asked some questions about our newest schoolroom teachers. I asked, tell us something about yourself, something that made you laugh, something that inspired you, why you love being an educator, why you became an educator, some hopes and dreams, and if anyone's here. So along with Emily is her fiance, fiance. So Emily graduated from SUNY Gen Seo with a bachelor's degree in childhood education and English education. She loves to travel with her family and to read as many books as possible. If you'd like to hear that. She tells us that what inspires her are her students. She said they inspire her every day with their hard work and dedication to learn English and working to graduate and attend college. So you probably guessed that Emily is an E&amp;L teacher at Baldwin High School. She looks forward to growing and achieving more than her time and involvement and is wishing the same. You see now, for all of you, what's on the other end, you only know like 30, 40 years. So in addition to that, we're giving each of our teachers who received tenure Horst's Sands on the Art of Teaching. And the inscription inside says, "He who is active to teach is acquainted, not only with common methods for common minds, but with particular methods for pupils of particular dispositions and tendencies. And he is acquainted with the principles of all methods whereby he can vary his plan according to any difference of circumstances. He should have a knowledge of modes as various as the diversity of pieces that may arise, that by any skillful pilot they may not only see the avenue for which they are to steer, but know everything in the channel that leads to it." That's Horst's man dated 1840. Mary Kate Mills. So Mary Kate is also an E&amp;L teacher, teaching at Baldwin Middle School. She attended SUNY Cortland for her undergraduate work, where she received a degree in teaching students with disabilities. She has a master's degree in E&amp;L at Torre College. I particularly pulled out what inspires you from what you wrote. And what you wrote was this, "Usually as a new teacher, you just want to do your best and stay under the radar. Now, if you know me, you know I don't allow you to stay under the radar." So Mary Kate was smart. She came right out from under that radar. However, this new teacher program, we have a new teacher program that goes for four years in this district. This new teacher program made me want to take more risks for my students. I would try out the strategies and then reflect on the outcome with my fellow teachers at our next meetings. The suggestions and insights that the other administrators and my peers provided inspired me to go even further to reach all the needs of my students. When we asked what her hopes and dreams are, she said, "This year, I was able to set up a pre-academy E&amp;L program at middle school. This pre-academy is a ninth-period class where the students are not mandated to attend, but where we have not had less than 25 students show up each day. It is a great experience for the students to get to know each other, build friendships, and practice their English even more. My hopes are to continue creating new experiences for our E&amp;L population." And Mary Kate is here with her parents and boyfriend, Andrew. Chris Passon. So Chris is our library media specialist at the middle school. I could probably go on for pages and pages without reading anything that you said in here. But I have to say that what you made me laugh made me laugh. But let me just kind of add that to some of what's in here. Chris is our middle school library media specialist. In many libraries, when you go there, first of all, the days of shh are over. We know that. And Chris's library is the exact opposite of being shushed. There are students in that library every period, every day. Not only are some of them reading books, but the action and the activity in that library is really what we strive for. You are a model librarian and a model teacher. When we have visitors, when we can take them to middle school, the library is one of the places we go. So I'm going to read you what made her laugh. But you all have to promise me that you're going to recognize that this is not commonplace. It just is one of those experiences that had and has been by fluke, and it made her laugh. She writes, "One incident in particular stands out for her. In a crowded hallway during passing, a teacher picked up a paper airplane a student dropped and decided it was a good idea to launch it." Right, this is a part that only happens.
Never happens.
Coincidentally, our principal happened to be walking down the hall at the same time. After a successful flight, the paper airplane landed at the feet of one of our students. He picked it up in front of the principal, handed it back to the teacher, and said, "I believe this belongs to you." The other thing that I picked out when I asked, "What are your hopes and dreams?" She said, "I feel like I'm living my dream right now. I love my job." And that is honestly what every teacher will say. And from what you saw from the teachers who retired, I think you can see that love and teaching go hand in hand. And you certainly demonstrate that. Chris is here with her boyfriend, Rob. Rob. And Kelly, is that your daughter?
No, that's Kelly.
Oh, Kelly. They're meeting in classes. Sorry. So congratulations, Chris. And last but not least, Vanessa Sendowitz. Vanessa, we go to her husband, Alex. Vanessa actually had one story too. Vanessa received her bachelor's degree in special ed from SUNY Cortland and her master's degree in teaching English to speakers of other languages. When asked what made her laugh, she said, "Teaching in an elementary school, there's never a dull moment." You think there's never a dull moment in elementary school? Go to middle school, bro. Each of my students with their own unique personality makes me laugh every day. But one thing that comes to mind is my students trying to pronounce my new last name. Do I go right to Central Hitting? After getting married over the summer, they tell me all the time, "You want Miss Wolf back." When asked what inspired you, she says, "My E&amp;L students inspire me every day. Despite the challenges and obstacles they face, they still come to school with a smile and eager to learn. In addition, the dedication and passion my colleagues and administrators show for our profession and our students motivates me and inspires me." When asked, "What are your hopes and dreams for the future?" She said, "I'm currently pursuing my educational leadership certification through Stony Brook University. I hope to one day be a leader in the leadership role in the Baldwin School District." And I would say, "I hope for the same. Jimmy, I think not so much." But we want to congratulate you on receiving it. So tonight is especially wonderful because we get to kind of celebrate the book end. I'm going to ask Vanessa to come back. We're going to ask those teachers to come back for a picture. And then we have one last moments of appreciation. And then we're going to take a break. We have refreshments in the comments. But if you'll just give us a couple more minutes for a picture. And then we'd like to recognize some other members of our community.
Okay, I would like to invite up the members of the EKA, join me up here, please. So for those who don't know, EKA is the acting for Baldwin Educational Assembly. They've moved that and been around here at Baldwin for over fifty years. And they have served as the research arm of the Board of Education, doing great work for a very long time in the coming years as well. But we wanted to take this opportunity to thank them for all of the work that they've done. EKA, one of my pathways actually, becoming a board member. So I've worked with them, and I need to work with them as a liaison from the board then. But over the years, they have done incredible research for us on things such as whether or not we should have multiple voting locations or budget vote reports on... What else did you think? I'm sorry, I'm out of the blanket. Nothing prepared. We've done presentations on the tax cap. I was involved with that. That was fun.
There's an opening on that one.
So we wanted to take this opportunity to thank these group peers, core of the EKA, as their executive board. And they have just worked tirelessly for a number of years. And even after their children have long gone from... Or not long gone, have gone. Some of them, after their children have gone. So there's opportunity for everyone in the community here actually to serve EKA. So we wanted to thank them for their years of service. We have behind you some nice orchids. But you have to serve for fifty years. Not just be in a group that's been around for eighty years.
Want to come out from here?
Should we go?
He's right here.
One, two, three.
Okay, we're going to break now, and we're going to have refreshments in the comments. So please, everyone, get a good drink.
So that's Katie. Katie. How's it going?
Yes, just doing like...
So then, don't worry about it. We can see what's happening. You're going to pick it up this same day. Sixty, but it gives us sixty.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then it's sixty. And you'll give us a hundred thousand, take a hundred fifty, give fifty, and you'll have it. It's almost a thousand. I think it's probably a little less than that. Because then, that's too much for you to get from sixty. Oh, you guys are awesome. Okay, I took all the bad things I still have. It's perfect. Okay, so that goes to happen. Every Friday at one thirty, you're going to have the event. Seven thirty, five thirty, seven thirty. And then, how about one thirty, and then pick it up at seven thirty, sort of good time. So sixty is... No, you're right. I didn't... Oh, okay.
John, please, my God.
No, I know. It might go business.
Right.
I mean, it might be that. Hold on, we'll be there on Thursday. Yeah, I agree with you.
And chairs, and things.
We have eight years. All right, perfect. Thank you.
I'll tell you that.
Thank you, Steve. I don't know. I think we're all trained. All right, I think we're all trained.
How you want to start the show?
I will. It's quite horrible that you have a mind. The sun is... No one, because I call... She has to. Exactly, exactly. If you find out what's waiting to you, but it couldn't be great. Because they have this... That is the... So, we have... Change. They did it to me. They only did it to me. It's not... They did it. We should know. I'm the way. It was hot. It feels so chilly. So, yeah. It's like, oh, we're going to show them. But to point, right? So you can't say, "It's great." It's a... We could use a little more weight. So then, policy, policy, so, policy, you can't do. Then it's a whole new ballgame. That's what, so one is... This is... We're going to have a lot of... Common options. We're going to try common. They used to like to try. But I do this. Right, so. We're going to try policy. Policy is what's... A whole national policy. But then, usually, they have... Is this policy?
I just want to say, well, I'm...
So, policy?
Policy. So my friends have learned a lot. I have... Maybe they're very... It's a bit...
I agree. But it's, it's the policy versus what, what happens and is lost for different. That's what I know. Next year. Next year. Who can already be there, who are in fashion, who are in fashion? You know, so when I thought about that, you know, when you're fighting for your rights, or you're... And who wasn't that fight? To see if you're fighting for your rights. Right, right. So it's kind of like, sometimes you shoot yourself in the foot. With those, the lawyers, but we have been about to say, I have a lot of friends that... Correct. Of course, we're not getting additional space right now. I would try my best. Shoot, which I know we do right now. Like, I know right now. I give you a bar. Why would that not surprise you? Here's something. I need some, like, something that's steady, caffeine, and I don't want to drink all of it. I didn't care. Lights are killing me.
I send you each of these all the time. So this is the one you generally...
Hi, Carol.
Ten years deeper than we did. Everyone may...
May I?
And the...
Yes. I enjoy the spirit.
I probably wish her to go off.
All to you know. Okay.
I was telling her.
Yeah. Right. So, welcome to Waldorf. Yes. Alright, well, nice to meet you. I do, I guess. Taking your seat. Alright, great. Very good. Thank you. Are they still there?
Not that they go away.
Alright, we are... We are back. Um, so, the comments when we're close to the Board of Education. Do you have comments? Okay. We're gonna move on. Comments and reports from the Board of Education. If anyone wants to share from their...
There's plenty to share. Not too many people.
No.
And we all have the same things. So, there's not much point.
Yeah, we were. Lots of great things going on. Our kids are awesome.
I was just trying to understand. The concerts were awesome. The mentoring dinner. In recognition of excellence, everything. Just, you know. Celebrating our kids, celebrating our staff. Amazing.
This is a fun time of year. Because it's all of the celebratory things. And it was wonderful. The play was fantastic. There's so much of that. The parade didn't get rained out. And it's done a very good end of the year.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Okay. That's our comments. So, we have reached our first comments and question period for comments from the public. I'm gonna ask the board even though I actually don't know what it is. But it's like, we have done this on occasion. This comment period is generally... It was my last. Generally, this comment period is limited to agenda items only. Just to ask the micro fellow board members if, in lieu of having the two comment periods, we just have the one comment period and open this to any topic. We all okay with that, huh?
Works for me.
So, we're doing it all down?
Yeah, we'll do it all down. There's not a lot of votes here.
Excellent.
Okay, so, we're gonna open the floor. For these comment period, we're gonna... It's timed, so it's no more than thirty minutes in total. Each individual will have up to three minutes to speak. When you approach the... Against the podium over here, you could give us your name and address in case we need to get back in touch with you. We do not discuss either related to individual students or individual students. Ask you to address your questions to me and to be respectful when doing so. And I think that covers all of the... The ground rules. So, if there's anyone who wants to make a comment or have a question, please approach the podium.
Hi. Been around high school stage. My name is Kristina Brennan. And I live on aisle two, Centennial Avenue. And I'm representing two other parents from Brookside Elementary. And we're just here today not for anything other than to just discuss and put it out on the table. There has been talk among Brookside Elementary that there will be two classrooms. Two classes for the third grade instead of three. Our particular group of kids started off with three kindergarten classes, three first grade classes, three second grade classes. And there is talk of decreasing the size to two. And so, we just have concerns for that based on class size. There's twenty-eight kids versus at the current time eighteen, twenty. And while we understand that when students hit the third to fifth grade level, there is a change in policy and the cap changes. I know that while that might be a policy, and I know that the policy has been suspended due to Shuver's closing an urgent school in the past. Either just a conversation as to considering making it still three classes or readdressing the policy that has been suspended. I know that all of you are totally informed on class size and the effect on the education of students. Especially a third grade year, a testing year. It's a very formative year in terms of reading and writing and how that affects their ongoing ability. And while there are only three parents here, I know that there are other parents that are concerned with the effect of that in Brookside Elementary. Brookside Elementary is an amazing school. It's actually higher than the other elementary schools, Philip and Oliver, like Zillow and Neighbors South and those types of schools. It's rated better than the other elementary schools. So, we know that Brookside Elementary brings out the best. And I do think, and so do the other members here, that if we increase the class sizes, we're taking that away from the students who thrive at Brookside. The one-on-one attention. I know my son Jacob with Miss Maywall and now with Miss Smith, she's on maternity. That one-on-one attention. He loves that whiteboard table that surrounds her desk that he can go to and she can give him that one-on-one. Or the small group instruction, the reading teacher that comes in. You add two more top tables. Can you hear me? The... You add four more top tables to that, and you are taking away from Jacob's ability to have that conferencing and instruction. It takes away from it. So, I think that's really what we're here to discuss, is just the conversation and the awareness of not doing that in the fall.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Did you want to talk about that situation?
Sure. So, we have... We've watched all of the class sizes starting about a month ago. Generally, in the month of May, we start to track our students and we sort of, you know, graduate them forward. And we look at how many students there are, how many sections there are. We do that every Monday from now until, honestly, until October. We are looking at, for example, how many students are in kindergarten and how many are waiting to be registered. We look at how many students are in the class and what the... What, based on whether it's two sections or three sections, what the average class size will be. There are no decisions that are made at this point. Right now, the policy is to split to two sections. In fact, there's one student less right now than there was a couple of days ago. And so, we watch that all summer long. You would be surprised at changes that happen over the summer months.
Oh, so, for kindergarten, I mean, when Jacob was going to kindergarten, they had a third class. A week before.
So, we watch that. We watch that every single week. The other thing that, you know, is important to note, and you've actually mentioned that, is that whatever number of students are in class, whether it's nineteen students in the class, or twenty-three students in the class, or twenty-five students in the class, you all know that we change the whole way that we do things with a reading teacher that pushes in or a look for the day. In some cases, there's the and al teacher who pushes in. In some cases, there's a specialized teacher who pushes in. So, there's very little time in a day where there's one teacher in any one of our classrooms. What I can tell you is that we're... We know the class size. We are watching the class size. I'm sure that you can understand as well that there might be other second grade classes going to third grade in other schools that fit a similar description. So, while it seems simple that it's just adding another section, it... Number one, there has to be enough classrooms for that. And number two, we have to make sure that all of the elementary buildings are handled adequately. So, we're looking at all of that. We look at that all summer long. You know, I wish I could tell you something tonight. There's something I can tell you. What I can tell you is we know what the situation is and we're watching that, not just for Brookside's third grade, but for a number of grades and in different buildings.
I know this is a yearly issue. This is the first time class size has been brought to the attention of the board. And I appreciate the explanation. I think that for today, it's more about seeing us represent Brookside and understanding that, to the best of your ability, consider the number of students put into this upcoming third grade class. Because it's always gonna be an issue because it started off in kindergarten. It was a discussion then, and it's a discussion now. And it'll probably be a discussion when they go to fourth grade too. So, just the consideration, because I know that everything's been slow in June of the year before it actually happened. So, this is more of a, "Hi, I'm here. I see you guys." So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Lazzada, or two questions. A couple of months ago, I had a conversation with a parent about something that reminded me of the fact that we like to say that all of the programs that were once cut during the Don Field, with the budget delay, have been restored. But there is one program that has not been restored, and that is the Elementary Drifted Program. It's called P H G. And this parent was expressing a concern about the fact there was no program offered for her child who she felt would have been included maybe after her challenging program in prior years. And I wanted to know if there's been discussion about bringing that program back.
We have not, the Board of Ed have had a discussion about bringing that program back. I think the discussions that we have had along with Dr. Pam has been more of the enrichment in all of the classrooms. Not necessarily the way the P H G program was pulling a smaller subset of kids out. It's actually addressing kind of a broader group of kids by kind of pushing in the enrichment to all of the students.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing if nothing else, we'll close out our comment period. And move along with our agenda. Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-ASE five hundred four Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in November two thousand seventeen, in January, February, March, April, and May two thousand eighteen, as detailed in the Friday memo. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. As this contains information pertaining to individual students, we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the home tutoring and special education service reports as detailed in the Friday memo. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Treska. Again, this contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss this in public. All is in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from Herman Albeck Memorial Trust Fund to be used to support professional development, curriculum enrichment, and innovative programs as approved by the Superintendent of Schools as detailed in the Friday memo. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
By Mrs. Coles. Other questions or comments?
Just thinking.
Yes. Thank you. To the Albeck Foundation. And this is the fourth year we've been supporting us.
Just a quick question. Do you have to actually pull out a... I'm sorry. Do you have to submit an application every year? They're actually supporting us. Right, exactly. Thanks.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education accepts with thanks two donations from the Northwell Health Spark Challenge Competition for one thousand dollars each to the Baldwin Political Laboratory Science Team for honorable mention for their presentation, and to the Baldwin Culinary Team for honorable mention for their poster as detailed in the Friday memo. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Treska. Are there any comments or questions?
I think we said this before, but congratulations to the teams who were able to secure it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, all is in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation from the ACTA Achievement Scholarship Program of one thousand dollars for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year to be used for professional development activities at Baldwin High School as detailed in the Friday memo. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Treska. Are there any questions or comments? Another congratulations to our students and the penalty to ACTA. All is in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so, for the President, I'm calling for consideration of the business items in this next agenda as consent items. This includes business items four through thirty-six, all the business items. Are there any items members of the character that draw up a consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a second vote?
Can you repeat that? Because I can't... The acoustics are coming down here. Do you want a judge to set for which items?
Four through thirty-six.
I'd like to remove thirty-five if you have a question.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, I was gonna ask. Do we still make a sentence or ask a question with thirty-five? We should... I thought you had to pull off the conversation.
Okay, well, you pull out the ones that you want to pull out. Do the consent agenda for the items one through four to thirty-six, less thirty-five. Do the motion and second on that, then discuss what you want to discuss in thirty-five.
So, I'm going to just ask you a question now.
But we might be going to discussions, like if we like to discuss.
Alright, so, we'll pull out there if I have any. Okay, so, we're gonna... So, we're gonna... I need a motion to approve consent agenda including business items four through twenty-eight, thirty through thirty-four, and thirty-six. So, moved by Mrs. Aiden. Second by Mrs. Coles. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Motion carries. Alright, so now we will discuss items till it starts.
This goes on the consent agenda. Yeah. Well, on the consent, and then we'll go to the items that we do in the hour.
Well, I'm just going by the... That's fine. So, do I have a motion to be approved by items four through thirty-six? I'm sorry.
Discuss the first again, or do you want to approve the ones that you want to issue? You gotta approve them, and then discuss the three that you pulled out, and then approve those, or just approve?
Oh, and then we all, all of them at once?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so, item twenty-nine. That's all right, so I have to do, read it from your first stat?
No. Oh, wait a minute. So here's the thing. You pulled those items off the agenda. Are we looking to put them back on the consent agenda? Because if that's not the case, then it should not just go on the consent, and then go to the individual items so that we can move second, and then discuss that we want.
All right, we can do that.
I'm sure there's two ways to do it.
All right, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, the items in the consent agenda, we're gonna vote on. So I need a motion to approve items four through twenty-eight, thirty through thirty-four, and thirty-six.
So.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
By Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a. Item twenty-nine, Board of Education approves the renewal of the district's grading of preferred meal systems for the 2018-19 school year. At a purchase price per meal of $1.60 for breakfast, and $2.60 second for lunch, which is a 2.5% increase from last year, as detailed in the Friday map.
So.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Questions?
Yes, so, I have a couple of questions I just, let me get to my page, I'm sorry. So, in the past, we received a report in terms of who's using the lunch program. Sorry, is this open? I don't think, in the past, we've received like the numbers, and, you know, as to how many people in this building are using the program.
Are buying lunch from the lunch program?
Right.
We used to get for breakfast, we would use say how many people at every elementary school actually attended. That was the beginning, I think, but of course, it really was brand new, because lunch, there was an even flow of breakfast, because there was a trial, and there was a little, it didn't even useful, and some people, it hardly being used, and some it was. So I think that was what it was.
Okay, and so, the reason I ask the question is why I actually had conversations with other people in other districts who have implemented the lunch program, and sometimes, like, I mean, the primary focus really is to feed children. But the second piece of it, sometimes it becomes more expensive to implement. I'm just kind of curious, not only how many people are serving, but is there an expense? Are we even, are we spending more money out, and, you know?
I can get you the numbers, as far as, so are, are lunch programs complicated in that the elementary schools are now on a free and reduced lunch program? The middle school and high school are not on a free and reduced lunch program, but full-on the program, sort of full-on the program. So let me get you the numbers, and then I can try and answer that other question in the Friday map. Karen, are you asking if the cost to the district has increased, or the cost to the district?
Sure, but while we're pretty noted that we're charging a little bit more because of whatever the costs is, but at a point, I think when we implemented the program, it was supposed to be kind of at no cost to the district. It was kind of even out in terms of, you know, what we are paying employees, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just curious to know, if we're at a point where we are still, still at no cost? Or are we, you know, are we spending more money out, you know, to run the program? And I'm not saying that, I mean, at the end of the day, it's not about really that, per se. Just would like to know.
Okay.
And so, to that end, I mean, and, you know, while we've had the conversation, I mean, you've seen the stuff floating around about, you know, quality, right, and then also the benefits, the added benefits of implementing the program, you know? Are we getting more state aid, that kind of statement?
That may answer for you. The, so there was a philosophical decision that was made five years ago, or six years ago, I guess, about the district moving to a federal free and reduced lunch program. We have seen the numbers of free and reduced numbers go up, obviously, because now we have elementary students who are filling out those forms. Unless the state unlocks the foundation, foundation aid formula, it never gets recalculated to take into consideration the change in, from zero to what would currently be the poverty rate.
Right.
They have not, to this point, done that. And so we've not seen additional aid based on the free and reduced lunch numbers, because the state has not opened up that formula.
Sure. So then, in, so in addition to that, are the grants kind of, grants contingent on that as well? So would we not be able to apply for grants as well? With, you know?
Right, so, depending upon the grant, obviously, where the grant is different. It seems that the majority of grants that have come out in the last ten years are really grants that are directed at school districts whose poverty rate is probably mainly fifty percent.
And we're not really that?
We're not close to that.
Then, so, just wondering, and how does that affect? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? No?
That's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I see. Okay. Item thirty-five, the Board of Education approves the extension of transportation contracts for summer 2018 with Actin Bus Corp., Boundless Bus Company, First Student Veterans Transportation Company, Suburban Bus Transportation, and New Transport. And for the 2018-19 school year, Actin Bus Corp., Boundless Bus Company, First Student Veterans Transportation, Suburban Bus Transportation, and New Transport. And for, something 2019, right? With Actin Bus Corp., Boundless Bus Company, Suburban Bus Transportation, and for the 2019-20 school year, Actin Bus Corp., Boundless Bus Company, Suburban Bus Transportation, and all ACTA, which will be published later in the month of June, as detailed in the Friday map.
So.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Dreska. Questions?
Yes. I just wanted to know how it's been over the past few months since the, what's right, what's right, the other relationship? I don't know, is there anything to evaluate that? I mean, I think certain policies have changed a lot.
Steve, do you want to answer that question?
It's, it's sort of hard. This is the most stable time of the year, so it's, it's hard to, you know, judge it. You know, we've had, it's with anything else, we've had a few glitches at times, but I think it's been pretty good. And I think the, the, at this time, the stability of it, one of the things that we're doing from Boundless for the second year is, is kind of capping the increase for the school year at two percent. So it's actually 2.2. The June number has come out. It will be capped at two, and we'll get the same thing for the following year.
So, for eight, for nineteen, ten, twenty? No, just for the nineteen, twenty school year.
For eighteen, nineteen?
Eighteen, nineteen, it's capped at two, because it's less, it's less than the amount that's out now, so it's two. And then for next year, wherever the CPI is, it will be capped at two for us.
Okay.
So I think that wasn't any damage, any damage to us. And we, I think they've been very responsive to my requests on specific issues, and given that we're going to have a lot of change in that area, I think some stability with the bus company will be important. And that wasn't the original intention.
Right.
But it's a sort of unintended positive consequence.
Okay.
But that wasn't there, you mentioned, and now I'm recalling that we were going to try to elicit some maybe technology on the bus.
Did you get some of your buses on the route? You know, anything else that we, that we got?
I know some of the buses, I only know the percentage of them that have GPS, but many do, because I know we've asked to, for reports, and can we ask for a report? We've gotten back exactly where the bus was, and so we were able to do that, we've had a question or investigation we were conducting.
And, oh, again, to that, I'm sorry, like cameras and things like that.
There wasn't still a camera, no?
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes for an extension? Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities reports July 2017 through June 2018, as detailed in the Friday map. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the recommendations for membership on the CPSD, CESD days for the 2018-19 school year, as detailed in the Friday map. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Second by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the long-range professional development plan 2018-2019, as detailed in the Friday map. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments?
I was reading through that question about my plan, and I noticed that most of everything in there was kind of in line with the board priorities. I was curious, I mean, even with, I think we was, I have a four student environment, or I can't remember which, or five, but I guess I was just curious to know, in which, with which, I'm sorry. Because I didn't see, oh, no. All right, I just, I didn't see, number, our, our priority of number four with our cultural work, and I was wondering in which, which one of those would be addressed?
Yeah, you're mostly like, the plan.
Yeah, I think there's a section in there regarding, it was four, so it was five, in the professional plan. There's one there about sensitivity, who's addressing that particular domain. So a lot of what we're doing, even with characterization, we've got plaza, it's kind of all embedded into that, that initiative.
Well, I, I'm not, you know, I'm just curious as to where.
Yeah.
Because even with, even as, I just also, I can't find that.
It also goes in the curriculum a little bit.
Right.
People looking at the musical hour, looking at the texts, more relevant texts, and we deal with that. So it's embedded a little bit in the curriculum, as well as the sensitivity component, so it's scattered and dotted.
All right, I just, like I said, it is, it did jump on the page. I mean, like I said, as I read each of the items, five.
Yeah, there's five.
And, and, like in four and five, there was clearly language from the board members in them, and our board priority with respect to cultural diversity was not embedded in that, so I was just.
Make sure it's clearer in the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Board of Education approves the following resolution. Whereas Section 135.4, Sub-SE 724, Regulations of the Commissioner of Education provides for a core of education for good pupils in grades in Illinois from seventh grade to compete on intrascholastic athletic teams, organize for senior high school pupils, for senior high school pupils to compete on intrascholastic athletic teams, organize for pupils in the seventh and eighth grade, and whereas these pupils are to be placed at levels of competition appropriate to their physiological maturity, physical fitness, and skills in relationship to other pupils in accordance with the standards established by the Commissioner of Education, and whereas the State Education Department issues the standards for these pupils to compete under a program for the athletic placement process, therefore, be resolved at the full, the entry school district, Board of Education shall permit pupils to compete under the athletic placement process, all in all sports, communes, participation, diversity level, sports, home. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Board of Education approves the following resolution. It is hereby resolved, called when using free school district, Board of Education here approves a change in the date of the 2018 reorganization meeting from Thursday, July 5, 2018, to Monday, July 9, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the district office. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? I would just ask if we could make sure that we publicize this, so that the, we won't, it was shown after. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the amended 2018-19 school calendar, as detailed in the Friday map. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Okay.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments?
What's under the calendar?
I'm sorry. You want to address what this changed on the calendar?
So there were two changes made on the calendar. One is, so in Starfleet, the calendar was published with the days off, and if there was snow, it meant that some of those days were not off, they had to come in. Instead, we flipped that around, so that people knew not to make plans on those days, because it's always possible that school will be open. The other change that was made in the teacher's contract, there's 184 days of deployment, and so the way that the calendar works to read that, that 184 days, the last week of school, which next year ends on Wednesday, the three days on Wednesday, the Thursday and Friday will be days for teachers and staff if we have too many snow days in the course of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, the policy section, actually, before I read this, just a question. The graduation requirements, did we not have a first read on that?
You had a first read on graduation ceremonies.
Oh, this is, okay, and, okay. Board of Education has a first read and adopts following policy, as detailed in the Friday map. Policy 4770, graduation requirements. So any motion?
Do you need a free time, someone?
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
By Mrs. Dreska. Yeah, we'll just go through each of the motions. Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education has an annual review and adopts following policy, policy 5300, code of conduct. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
By Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? I had a question. Do we not, I don't know, but. I'm just asking a question. You don't have the pro pincels on. We not have to adopt this at the year, we're allowed to adopt it?
I think not.
Anytime.
And I just had one other question, too. It's quite the tome.
Yes.
So we, what, what we would see as the, the short version, that's in the booklet that parents get, how is the short version distributed?
So the short, Anthony, do you want to answer?
We could distribute the short version at grade-level assemblies, beginning of the year.
On paper, or?
We, we have to put it online, but we could also distribute it on paper at a grade level assembly we want, but it's almost as online, for whatever.
Okay, that's also the difference between the long version and the short version. The short version is something that we actually hand out?
Correct.
To go over, where the long version would post it online?
Correct.
And the, the short version, do, is there reference, or is it somehow linked to? So Karen was concerned, for instance, about a particular interpretation. They could go into the short version and say, okay, I really need to know about this part, and then go?
They'd have to go back into the, the actual policy, the hundred, and find.
There's a way that refers them to that, that's what I'm concerned about.
It's not directly linked, because it's a, it's a summary of the documents. So unlike the actual code now, which is linked to the actual policy, 300.1 or 2, the short policy, the short version is just a pre-description, something.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or standing? The Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following. The Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policies as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy twenty-two seventy, the school attorney, policy forty-seven seventy-two, graduation ceremonies, policy eighty-five, old father charging the school meals, policy eighty-five, twenty-three, and reduced price food services. So, move by Mrs. O'Hayden. Second by Mrs. Coles, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education moves and seconds at the table item policy twenty-three forty-two, agenda preparation and dissemination, taken from the table, and has a second read and adoption, policy twenty-three forty-two, agenda preparation and dissemination. Move by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
By Mrs. Coles, are there any questions or comments? Uh, there was a question, Mrs. O'Hayden, you had tabled this.
I asked for this to be tabled, so that we could have a conversation about it, because I had concerns about the policy, so, there was something, it was a message suggesting that maybe any tabled policies could be put together.
I, 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 that was tabled, um, we're trying to get it back on the agenda, but our meetings have been so long, that there hasn't been, at least, basically, a full conversation. My suggestion would be, um, as we, like, we tend to do, this is a work session over the summer, where we can talk about policy and other items that are, I would not, that don't fit into the normal agenda.
Yeah, I would prefer that we be able to have a, a discussion.
Okay, I'm okay.
I just wanted to take your word.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so you want to?
I'd like to table it.
Okay. So, the motion to table any of the second? Second by Mrs. Reed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that is tabled. We'll try to get a work session on the summer. Board of Education approves the following resolution. It is resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent and or board president to execute a memorandum of understanding with the assignment of nomination regarding a collaborative educational program subject to the final approval of the terms of said agreement by the superintendent, schools, and district legal counsel. Move by Mrs. Reed. Second, second by Mrs. O'Hayden, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the following resolution. It is resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent and or board president to execute a memorandum of understanding with subject to community policy regarding a collaborative educational program subject to the final approval of the terms of said agreement by the superintendent, schools, and district legal counsel. So, move by Mrs. Reed. By Mrs. O'Hayden, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and taking, or any motion to waive the twenty-four hour rule? Move by Mrs. Reed. Then by Mrs. O'Hayden.
Do we need to vote on that, Mary?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the Board of Education approves the following resolution. It is resolved that the Board of Education of the Baltimore Elementary School District having heard agreements in the executive session on June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, hereby denies such agreements and directs the district court to notify the Baltimore Teachers Association of the Board's decision. Move by Mrs. O'Hayden. Second by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension? That is done. Any other?
So, Mr. Press, um, Mrs. Dreska, I have a question regarding, um, another third try, the bus, we voted that they did, the question, they voted.
Right, the same one we talked about in terms of the, the bus company. When we last discussed, uh, the record, it was language that prevented us from going to a different company, because, uh, the language in the contract was wrong, because the language prevented us from utilizing a different bus company. I wasn't sure if that was addressed in the new contract, that, just in case they were to go on strike, and that created much more flexibility than we did when the situation happened.
We cannot change the contract if we're going to extend, we would have to go, we did, take a chance on the prices, and all the bids.
Who hasn't been?
Change the contract.
Do you want to get the break up?
Yes.
It's a, that's why in many places, come, as, some of ours, as contracts are extended for years and years, if, you know, you know, if you would have competitive pricing, which we'll be looking at over the course of the summer, to evaluate if that's the case here.
Okay, and, thank you.
Any, you know? Another?
Uh, only that I attended the health and safety meeting as the, or the Suntag group, and once again, I'm, I'm impressed by the, the level of, of inquiry, that it's so, the things seem so minor, I guess, is what I'm saying, that, uh, there really isn't great attention to detail, and, uh, there were a very short list of incidents, uh, that required, where a student required medical attention, but most of the conversations centered around the new, uh, school security procedures, and it was, it was really, and, a very good conversation, um, as in anything that is introduced new, you know, you don't realize what the little things that need to be tweaked until you see how it plays out, what are the things, and I'm sure then, as I said, maybe, uh, maybe this, uh, spoke to Dr. Caddy about some of the results, but it was things that I would not anticipate, that the kids are substituting their own personal lanyards, just as, as kids do. And so, then, the question was raised, are the kids using the lanyards that are breakaways? Because we made such a point that lanyards should be breakaways, or they can't, they, you know, somebody could be hurt by them, but, I guess, I, I started looking for that, that the kids would substitute for all of that. So, it was things like that, you know, little things that, that could be tweaked. So, this was actually a very good discussion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, before we adjourn, I'm just gonna read some important dates. For those of you at home, and those of you here with elementary students, uh, elementary schools, A.M. session only on Thursday, June twenty-first, middle school moving up ceremonies Thursday, June twenty-first, nine A.M. and twelve-thirty P.M. If, uh, any board members can make it there, to either of those sessions. Nine A.M. and twelve-thirty P.M. That would be greatly appreciated, if you can show some, our support. And I guess, you know, it's time to go to the elementary, so, yeah. Um, okay, last day of school, Friday, June twenty-second, uh, and the same day, uh, there are elementary moving up ceremonies, high school graduations by P.M. at the high school on Friday, June twenty-second. Schools are closed on Wednesday, July fourth, that's for everyone, all ages as well. Uh, and our next Board of Education meeting, uh, our reorganization meeting, as we had said earlier, Monday, July ninth, at eight P.M. July, oh, seven, yeah, sorry, seven P.M. at the district, on July ninth, at seven P.M. at the district office. Move by Mrs. Dreska, and, and Mrs. Reed, all those in favor?
Aye.